Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Park Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. And our agenda is in front of us tonight, so. I guess I'd like to. Have a wonderful. The agenda of us actually want to have. They'll see that. Let's introduce the new votes.
This is Aaron Bigelow. He's our new planning and zoning assistant, so he'll be here sometimes doing minutes. He'll be your staff support in February when I'll be, I'll be gone and. Yeah, we've been here for about three weeks and it's been a great addition to the team so far. And then your new member over here, Kim Kay Niyak, some of you have met her before. She has grew up in Park Township and has been out and about and around and lived in a bunch of different places, but has been back for a while and. It's be joining you on the zoning board of appeals. So glad to have Kim here as well.
Okay, so. One other announcement I think before we get started, if there's anyone here. That is hoping to hear or discuss the rezoning of Watchas Drive as not the agenda proceeding, so. You're welcome to. The part if you were open to see that, so otherwise. Yeah, at this point, more approval of tonight's agenda.
Of course.
Yes, of course. All favorites.
Alright.
All right, we get minutes from our last meeting of October seventh. I think I only saw one item of each of the page law. At the very bottom of the after next item. The first sentence from the United States he should achieve.
Mr. Chairman, I have one correction. Under attendance, I was not listed and I was present. As proven by the first two motions made in the meeting.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the minutes from October seventh, two thousand twenty-four with those corrections.
Support.
All the favor. All right. So our next. Item here is to continue our public hearing. From October seventh, year number one, that was part of that meeting, that was a request. On behalf of the terrible oversight setback, seven feet or ten feet is required, so verified, so. I guess. At this point, if any word, just I guess we can open it back up. If there's any further clarification from the applicant for third year, they want to step forward and talk a little bit more about. Anything that might have been. New to this, I guess, at this point, or if it's.
No, no, just for the clarification, we're requesting a seven-foot setback. The reason for that setback is we need the ability to maintain the well in the future. And we have with the seven-foot variance, if granted, that leaves us about ten feet to get the well rig up there. Which is barely enough space to do that. Anything less and the well rig up there can't rotate. Because the, the device that does the servicing is in the center of the unit, so it has to be able to get up there and rotate. And that's from various meetings with Raymer Wells and Hesco Well Drilling. So I had them at the site, looked at the staking, showed them the information and asked, can we easily maintain this later? And that was when they went over the need to get up there, rotate the rig onto the location and anything less is just. Either not possible or extremely difficult. So that's the reason for the variance. There was again consideration made towards the neighbors in terms of the design. I did bring some renderings here that show that a little better today. From the angle of the roof to the height. The structure was kept small out of respect for the other areas and the neighbor. So they did make a good faith effort and the only reason it is where it's asked, where it's at now is again to service that well. And just for clarity's sake, the well has to be located right there. I reviewed that with Mika and I think she brought you some additional documents. Per the Health Department, there is no other location that that well can be due to the clearances required to. Meet the septic system setbacks from the wellheads. So yeah, any other questions or any other clarification? I do have a full-size plan here. I can pull dimensions quickly this time.
Question on the well, so it appears that the county granted a variance as well. Was that to locate it? So that it would be located further from the structure when it's built?
No, I'm not aware of the county granting a variance for the well. The Health Department, working along with Eagle. In our setbacks is how we got to where we're at. So we have to. We have to first get approval from Eagle. Once Eagle gives us the approval, then we can get the Health Department approval and they do kind of work together. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, you showed an open public hearing from the past meeting, so if you want to ask for public comment or to. Close that or just wanted to remind you that that was still open.
All right, yeah, that's all about the comment. Okay, so yeah, please step forward, introduce yourself. I think there's a. Signed a sheet there, maybe.
Okay. I think you got my email. I sent a few emails, but if you want me to write that in there, I can do that. My name is Edward Lat and I am the neighbor to the north. I wasn't here last time because I had to travel for business. So I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and talk. You know. A question that I have for. The board is, is there any way that we can hear from other. Association members? Did anybody write in, give comments, what their feelings were in regards to this?
We did have several email communications. Get her back here in front of us, say.
So everybody received them. Any chance they could be read aloud?
It's. That's up to you. It's not our standard practice, but that's your decision.
I don't think there's a precedent for that.
I think it would be fair to say that there were. Multiple letters, some in strong support for the application, some in strong opposition and several. Some were in support of a, of a three-foot setback, for example, when they're requesting seven. Others didn't have a number but supported the idea of it, so they're kind of all over the board, if you will.
Okay. You know, in summary. Where I stand on this is I do object to them being closer. And it in, in large part, it's because, you know. In researching what other boards, zoning boards generally do to, you know, form a decision on. On a variance approval, seems to be like there has to be a hardship, right? I don't see any hardship here with regards to having to have a larger home. Larger in the sense of width and height, okay? Many people have in our association, which is very unique and historical, small lots, they have complied. To the variance, right? We got two, we got one being built right now, it being added on to. And she's actually our sitting president and she's fitting in and complying. With the ordinance and the, and the very, and the overlay rules. So I, it can be done, right? Is it, is it a want or is it a need? Is there really a necessity here or do you just want a bigger house, right? And that bigger house will encroach on my property. So I want them to have a new place. And I think they could do it within the guidelines. So I just want to make that, that point clear that there was some mention that this is an improvement on what the existing structure was. So there was an outcrop and that was three feet roughly from the property line. Eleven feet wide, twelve feet tall. Not fifty feet long and twenty-seven feet high. You know, to being closer, right? And I, I think it should stand that that eleven feet was closer, yes, but the, the. Majority of the house, the rest of the house was in compliance to the ten-foot variance. So I do feel this is a great opportunity. For us to get back to. What the rules are. We got a reset. The building's torn down now. Nothing there. Can. Design a house that's going to fit within. What the guidelines are. So. I just ask that the zoning board, you know, considers that when they make a decision. The other thing, I think, maybe it's already been mentioned, but. We did have the zoning board approach us, Edgewood Beach Association, to help form. A and help develop the. The current ordinances or the current zoning rules. And there was many people on that. There was ex-presidents, me being one of them. We had lawyers. We had current board members and we, we helped you. To come up with these. These overlays. Right? So it was all agreed upon and we did that because we wanted to preserve. The uniqueness and historical value and of, of our association, so. Granting a variance sets precedent and I don't want that to happen because there's nine properties at least that I, by, by my count. That could be tear downs or add-ons right now. That's going to affect just about everybody in the neighborhood if everybody wants to get big. So. I just ask that you strongly consider to uphold. The, the ordinance, not to set any more precedent and. Yeah. There was also something in there that talked about aging in place. And maybe that being a reason for. The property to be a little bit bigger. It's going to be a very difficult place to be aging in place because access to the upper level all requires stairs. So I don't know if this would be a great aging in place. It's not my decision to make. Right? But I think there was. Maybe some. Reasons for that in the hopes to get the zoning board to. Consider that as a, as a potential option for them, but. Yeah, there's, there's no need for that, I don't think, regards to what our ordinances have already said and. You know, I don't want to set a precedent. For larger places in the place. I've been, I think one other thing that just popped in my head, I'm there full-time. It's my primary residence. It's their primary residence. They own realty companies, commercial real estate, they have properties, homes all over the place, so. They're not here, but only a couple of weekends out of the year. So I have to put up with their place being big, bigger. Three, three sixty-five, so. I ask you to keep that in consideration too when you make a decision. Appreciate it. Thank you for the, the voice. Certainly understand Mr. Olet's concern. You know, we talked about the hardship aging in place. Yes, I can agree that you have to get up there, but once you're up there, if we're able to live on one level that is classified as aging in place. Mr. Well, that talked about the uniqueness of the properties there. We worked very hard to maintain that, you know, that, that look and. I understand the concern about the size of the property and as the board, I mean, you guys have to balance a lot of issues. If this doesn't work and they need to shrink it, then they do have to go up higher. And I think that works against the character of the neighborhood. I think it works against Mr. Olet's. You know, benefit to have a two-story structure there versus a single story, so. In the design process, as it's been relayed to me by the architect. They worked very hard to keep this thing attractive to the neighborhood, consistent with the neighborhood and not massive in size. I, I'm not a real estate expert, but they're basically building a fourteen-hundred-square-foot house on a piece of property worth one point five million dollars. It just. Nobody does that if they aren't concerned about maintaining the character of the neighborhood, if they aren't concerned about the neighbor. You and how this affects them. The way the roof is designed is sloped away from his house so that it doesn't burden him. We are. Previously, there was. Twenty-two feet that was less than ten foot from the property line of the current structure. Yes, there is fifty now. Nine of that was two feet nine from the property line, so. It, it just. When considering all of it. The desire to age in place. Well, footprint large enough at fourteen hundred square foot, if you look at design, there's one bedroom in this thing. So I, I, I think they've done a lot to accommodate the neighbor. I think they've done a lot to try to maintain the character and integrity of the neighborhood. And with regards to the neighbor and future issues, understand that concern, you do it for one. Then you've got to look at doing it for others. The neighbor mentioned, as I understand it, that's a double lot and different set of circumstances there. They've got more room to work with. The builds that I've been involved in, whether it's an inland lake or Lake Michigan, a ten-foot setback on, on inland lake property is extremely. Uncommon. I understand that they were polled and asked what they wanted, but that doesn't mean everyone wanted that. So. I understand the concern. I think a lot has been done to accommodate that. And, you know, would suggest that the alternative, if the variance isn't approved, could be a whole lot worse. Because they will have to get that square foot another way. And the only way to do that is to go up. Because we're already at our max in terms of our setback from the front and the thirty year from the, from the road or from the water, so. That's, I think, the summary. Lake State. Yes, thank you. Good evening. First Fosh. We have a home, my wife and I have a home, one seven two eight four North Street, about a hundred and twenty-five feet from the property that we're talking about tonight. Brought some notes and a couple of things kind of struck, struck me when I was reading the application. And it came out a little bit, but what are the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships of complying with Park Township zoning ordinances? In the application. There were, there were no comments other than we want a variance and in the application. I'm not sure if the application's been amended or not. But nonetheless, we hear in the ninth inning in the last meeting that the well now, it, it seems to be the hardship. There was an existing well. I'm not sure if that's not drawing water anymore, but the new well now is too close to the house. I'm curious on this, when we're talking hardships. Is a hardship transferable? So in other words, their hardship with a well now becomes the next door neighbor's hardship. Because of the ten-foot setback. And I'm curious, are we picking winners and losers in Park Township? I don't think we are. I think we play by rules. I think we, we live by rule of law. When we look at precedent, that's what concerns me the most because it's not just our neighborhood. It could be any neighborhood that now says, hey, these guys got it. And now it's not just for a house. Now I want a garage. Instead of a shed being a five-foot setback on the side. I want three feet, so I want to put it two feet next to the lot line. So my current concern with all this is it's not just this home. I, I saw some confused or surprised faces maybe when we were talking about a little bump out on the north side, the little room that's on that north side. It was a non-conforming structure. Per the guidelines and per the rules in Park Township. I understand, we don't, we don't ask people to tear things down because they're not compliant right now. But when a cottage is taken down, which it already has been, now we have the opportunity as a township to look at it and say, hey. Let's get this property now into compliance so that we're all working by the same set of rules again, rather than allowing different rules for different people. The last thing I would touch on. Is. Nope, I already touched on that. So I'm good. Thank you.
Efficient.
So the, the reason the current well can't be used is because of the required location from the Health Department for our septic system. We also are not permitted, no one's permitted to create a hardship for someone else. So the new location of the well takes into account both the primary and the reserve fields for all of the neighbors. So by moving the well up the hill, it cannot create a hardship for the others. That's part of that permit requirement. And that's why we had to identify everyone's septic system around there, so. A lot of this is just an understanding thing, but, but that is, that's the case, is we haven't created a hardship for someone else by moving the well up.
Thank you.
So. I just want to. Respond to that response, you know. We designed the house. Bigger than it needs to be. Right? You can still design a house to look and feel. Like the community. On a smaller footprint. So that's one thing I wanted to add to his response is, can we design a house? That fits? And I think the answer to that is pretty simple. Yes. And then why aren't they doing it?
Great. I don't see anyone else stepping up, so I'm going to close the public comment for the point coming up. He's actually going to have some applicant. He said you had more renderings. Is that something you could share with us?
Sure, there's three topics here. Guys, like.
I mean, I think there's a core planning.
That's the outside of the wall.
That are standard, you do have standard section thirty-eight seventy up near. For standards. The, the initial, within the packet of initial comments. I discussed. Actually laid out additional properties for comparison with different size. Your site setbacks, the outside setbacks. Kind of the total setback, you know, that was kind of interesting. Analysis of the episode. Reading the highlighted. The application that we're looking at tonight. Had a combined whole site setback. Between the north and south. Seven north, twelve west side. Total nineteen. Which we can compare to. Six other properties here. Kind of led. Kind of led the group here on. Whole site setback, which I found to be interesting. We got the one that has a zero here toward three thirty-one. And the north side, yeah, by the way, so there's a straight base of everything.
And Mr. Chair, I did know that this was based on GIS calculations and it was certainly to be off by, by a little bit, so.
Sure. I mean, just, just for overall. Where they, they can say, I love this.
I have some general comments on the overlay district. Certainly, an overlay district is usually intended to try to address. Unique circumstances of a neighborhood or specific area or areas. And. We obviously take those into consideration. It doesn't. Override our ordinance with regards to variances. You can still seek a variance under the same. Requirements. In the, the purpose of the Edgewood Beach overlay district in the document that was provided to us. One of the stated purposes of the district is to allow for the modernization of existing single-family dwellings. I. Pulled my notes from the last time the applicant was before us now, almost two years ago. To refresh my memory on that application and in looking at that and in looking at the application before us tonight. It seems to me that the applicant has attempted to. Comply in the sense that initially the applicant wanted to modernize the existing dwelling and to retain that. Dwelling and renovate it and ran into. I don't know, the specifics were told to us, but challenges that were insurmountable in, in doing that. So I think that reading through the purposes of the district, that what the applicant is asking for permission to do here seems to be. Consistent with that. On to. Modernize a dwelling, I realize the dwelling is no longer there, so I'm just speaking generally, but in looking at the design of the home. The scale of the home, what struck me was. Um, what struck me was this is relatively small um. Compared to some of the things that we, some of the requests we see coming before this floor and otherwise. Um, certainly significantly lower in height than what the ordinance would permit in this location. Um. The square footage uh is relatively. It's a modest sized home and it appears based on the figures that staff provided again from the S and A or their. Um, records that seems to be in keeping with. Square footage of neighboring homes. Um, it doesn't. Strike me as an applicant coming in and saying, I don't feel like the order says this is what I want. Um, or just trying to push the limits of. Wanting to go higher than, than what's required. Um, I understand that the, there is a ten foot setback, however. I do believe, in my opinion, that there has been evidence of. Unique circumstances on this property that create a hardship given the combination of. The well, the uh critical dunes, the narrow size of the lot, the change in topography. Um, and I agree with, with um the applicant's comments here tonight that if. If this home isn't approved here, that likely the next thing. To be proposed for this property is going to be significantly higher, um which. Seems as though that would be more um. Overwhelming for the neighbors and also present a, a lack of privacy. I. I noticed um not only in the drawings that were provided last time, but now in these new renderings. The north um wall of the structure being proposed is there are very minimal windows. Um, they are posing to maintain the floor at the same. Elevation. Um, I believe there was a comment that the. Thieves were going to be maintained um as. Around the same. Um, elevation and, and as they noted tonight, the roof slopes away from the, the north. Neighbor, so it does appear based on the design that it was. And that, but, but good paid attempt to take the neighbor's concerns into consideration. We also can't ignore the fact in my opinion that this does make this property more. Conforming. Again, the former structure is no longer there, but when it existed, it was two point nine and three point eight foot side yard setbacks. And both the minutes and my notes from the January twenty three meeting indicate that the chair at the time. Spoke to both neighbors, north and south, um about the plans uh which would have. Robbed it. The structure closer um and that they were. They were. I guess in agreement, for lack of a better. Word with those plans. Didn't object to them. Um. I don't understand that. The previous chair indicated in January twenty twenty three that he went to the property on a Saturday. Both neighbors were home and he spoke with them about the plans and that they've occurred. That's what my notes and the minutes read like.
So that would be just be approved.
Correct. That was two years ago, almost two years ago. Correct. Not, not this application. Yes. Um. So, um, in my opinion. I think it's important that we have to read the zoning ordinance as a whole, so we have to take into consideration overlay district and still the ability to obtain a variance where the requirements are met. So just some. General balance there. I had some comments about. Um, the correspondence we received, but I can already summarize those. And, and I just, I agree with. Just reiterate, I agree with the applicant's comments and this is a staff comment. When this matter came before us in twenty twenty three, that. A structure built to its maximum height further away would be more imposing. Um, especially on a site like this where you have the significant change in elevation, so. I take that consideration. And if I just have one more, then I'll be fine. Um, the concern about precedent, that's always a concern, right? We, we hear that frequently. Um. And. I guess I would just make a couple of comments. If. If a variance is granted. Um. It certainly doesn't. Give someone the ability to come in and say, hey, you gave this to John next door, I want the same thing. Now they might ask, but we still have to go through on a case by case basis. Look at the situation, apply the factors, um so we can speculate, but. There is a lot of reference in the correspondence and in the comments about other properties being. Built or modified. In conformance with the regulations. And so I think. One way to look at that is that. They were able to do that. They may not have had a hardship or they may not have had something. A unique circumstance on that specific property. That would have created a need for a variance. So while I understand. The concern about precedent, and that is something that comes up oftentimes with variances. Um. The board. The board doesn't. Look at variances in terms of what else have we done in this neighborhood. They're still looked at on a case by case basis.
We got a question about this properties in the area. This neighborhood. So this property is just. Almost the people I've tagged, right, Seth? Where, where are some of the other neighboring?
I think all of them, all of them along the lake are fifty feet. I don't remember if I checked the ones further into the neighborhood. I think that they're pretty similar, but the ones along the lake are all fifty feet.
Uh, Mr. Chair, based on. Um, my experience on the board. For the years that I've been here. Uh, the, the whole idea of the overlay area is to. Look at. What the applicant is proposing in light of the fact that that's a very special. Property. And they have. Because of that and because of how it was built. Uh, originally makes it extremely difficult to make improvements. That don't necessarily require. Um, a variance. And so. I think when an applicant comes to us and has done as much work. To ensure. Um, that he's not infringing on the rights of his neighbors. Um, we can't tell him how to design a house. I mean, our, our purview is regarding the standards and the ordinances and. Um. I feel that the applicant has attempted to. Um, meet all of our standards and requirements. And therefore has a legitimate request here. And I agree with my. Co-board member Morgan. Uh, in her comments regarding this specificity of uh meeting these standards, so. Um. Uh. I, I, I just feel that uh. It'd be hard pressed to find any. Um. Legitimate. Precedent from which to not. Consider this as a legitimate request.
Sanders, I mean. Justification for. My board. Pretty easily. Understandable. If you're ready, but I, I don't see it anyhow. I guess so. In that regard, I guess.
I'd like to make a motion. To make a motion that the board approve the requested variance for a seven foot side yard setback. Uh, finding that the standards set forth in section thirty eight dash seventy are met as follows.
Uh, Ms. Morgan, could I interrupt just a second? I have one comment. Yes. Um. With, with this variance, you do, if you do the seven foot request with setback, if you approve that. Um, I wonder if you might want to add a clause specifying uh one story structure or plans as presented.
Yes, that would be part of the conditions.
Wonderful.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so a motion to approve the request for a seven foot side yard setback. On the north boundary line. Um, consistent with the plans that were presented, which will become the condition of approval, finding that the following standards. In section thirty eight dash seventy have been met. First, that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area yard setbacks, frontage height, bulk or density or other regulation. Would render conformity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. Um, under this factor, in the record, we have evidence of um. What staff refers to, and I agree, as unbendable requirements from Eagle. Um, due to the property being in a high risk erosion area, that in combination with the Ottawa County Health Department requirements for the septic. And the ability to service the well in the future. Um, the overall size of the parcel, the buildable envelope on the site. Um, is small in light of the topography, the dunes, um and the. Narrow. Size of the lot. For all those reasons, with that, I think can be met. Second factor, that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. Um, under this factor. Um, as the board has discussed, the staff memo sets forth. Um, a comparison of the subject property to other properties in the neighborhood. Um, and that. The total side setbacks. Uh, with this granted variance would still exceed any other home on the street. Um, it was important for staff to point out, and I agree, that when neighbors rebuild or modify homes, they may face similar challenges. Therefore, I think it's important that we read zoning, this, the zoning ordinance as a whole. To recognize that variances may still be appropriate even in overlay district. Third, that the plight of the zoning, uh, excuse me. Third, that the plight of the property owner or applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. Um, in this uh case, again, we have a combination of the width of the lot, the topography, the environmental requirements. Um, and the well and septic. Uh, components that are not typical of. The zoning district as a whole. Um, for that reason, it is not due to the general conditions of the zoning district. And that fact can be met. Or that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. Um, we have no evidence in the record that the property owner has created the practical difficulties. Uh, that were described, that they are the result of the characteristics of the property. Um, and the other um governmental requirements that are imposed upon them in building a facility. So for those reasons, um, I believe that the factors can be met. I would. Add to my motion that the approval be conditioned upon the structure being. Um, constructed in substantial conformity with the approved plans as a single family, or I'm sorry, single story. Single family residence. Um, and that. Specifically noting that the uh roof line is to be constructed in the manner depicted in these. Uh, renderings. And that, uh, as consistent with these renderings, that the. North facing wall have um the minimal windows as uh already discussed it.
Support.
Support.
I don't know. I guess what they will call this. We, we got.
Um, Ms. K. Naik. A support. Uh, Ms. Morgan, yes. Mr. E.
Yes.
Mr. Serdine.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Got your variance. We've now got uh. Our next item on the agenda, basically, public counter, so. For the opportunity for public counter, if anybody wishes to do so. During now, we're saying now, we'll close public counter with the ranch. And our next meeting is scheduled for December fifth. Is there anything on the calendar for?
I think there was one. I was going to check and I forgot. I think there's one.
Everybody press up for that. You're right, you're right. I forget.
Sorry.
For the next, for the next.
Yes, I will be there. Yes.
Before you do, I'd like. To request our new member to just give us a little background and. Information so that we can feel closer to you.
Yeah. Okay. Um. What do you want to know? Um, I. Uh, I lost home and uh. We, we, we're gonna have to come on the auto profile. Um, I uh. Moved. For a little bit, I really kind of hate. I'm coming back. So I, I dropped him between the India and the next. Oh, okay. Yeah, we always tell people where the first content comes from, but they.